How about audio? Audio's not on?
It's on.
No, it's on. Okay, good. Okay. I'd like to thank my colleagues who are here this morning. It's 9:03. Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Yamashita, Senator Sam Abini, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Manasseh Tyron, Senator Dofu, Borja Palacios Sr., Senator Anthony Ada, better known as Tony, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Damasi Ada, and Senator Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. Buenas. Wow, we do have a quorum. Very good. Amen at 11:00. La leche has returned to Guam. Session is called to order. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Guthertz.
May I, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker and colleagues, I move to adopt today's session agenda dated March 23, 2011.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. I'd like to ask Senator Dennis Rodriguez if he can lead us, please, in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here today. We ask you to bless us and guide us in word and in thoughts as we make decisions that impact the people of our island. We ask that you continue to protect our island and our beautiful people of Guam. Amen.
Situs Masie. Senator Rodriguez. Recitation of Inefresi. Senator Tina Rose. Munia Barnes, can you lead us?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues can join me. Inefresi.
For the singing of the Fenogitamoro, I ask if Senator Manasseh Tyron can lead us. And for the National Anthem, Senator Tom Ada.
Fenogitamoro, curita nota. Kantai matunaniagito ruiluga. Para i onra, para i gloria. Abiba i isla sin para. Para i onra, para i gloria. Abiba i isla sin para. Toru i tempui pas para ita. Zanginimi lengit na bendishon. Contrabiliro, na fansafuham. Tuz protehi islan Guam. Contrabiliro, na fansafuham. Tuz protehi islan Guam.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light. Was so proudly we held. At the twilight's last peak. Those broad stars and bright stars. Through the perilous tides. For the ramparts we watched. Were so gallantly dreamed. And the rockets there, there. The bombs bursting in air. Gave proof to the night. That our flag was still there. Oh, say, those as stars rankled. Ever yet quay. For the land of the free. And the home of the brave.
Situs Masie. I'd like to ask the clerk to please take your call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator? Wait a second. Let me have the protocol listing. Somebody gave me the wrong one. Okay. Senator Blas? Senator Cruz? Senator Guthertz? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Penlinen? Senator Respechus? Yes. Speaker Wampit? Senator Yamashita? Senator Duñez? Senator Abini? And Senator Silva Tyron? Madam Speaker, would you support their request for a quorum?
Thank you very much. Senator Guthertz, on the call for the approval of the Legislative Journal? Senator Guthertz?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to approve the daily journals of February 21 and 24, 2011, and March 14, 2011, subject to corrections.
With that motion, without any objections, so ordered. On communications and petitions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications petitions. I move to waive its reading and to append them to today's journal.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Messages?
Madam Speaker, there are messages from the Governor. I move to waive its reading and to append them to today's journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Reports of standing committees?
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees. And I move to waive its reading and to append them to today's journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. There are no reports of select committees?
There are no reports, Madam Speaker, of select committees at this time.
Okay. And then introduction of bills?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill Number 111-31 to Bill 118-31. And Resolution Number 51-31 to Resolution Number 54-31 be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. We are now in motions, Senator?
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse Senators Respechio and Senator B.J. Cruz from today's session.
On that motion, without any objections, and so ordered. On resolutions and certificates?
Madam Speaker, I move that all legislative resolutions and certificates of congratulatory, commendatory, or condolence nature introduced before the end of this legislative day be considered to have had its first reading and that they be adopted by the body and that all members be listed as co-sponsors and to allow the legal counsel to make technical corrections as are necessary or as recommended by the author.
Without any objections, and so ordered. And the other, on motions?
Madam Speaker, just second reading.
Okay, so, all right, and so we are now then a second reading, so I'd like to recognize Senator Tom Ada.
Madam Speaker, may I first place Bill Resolution Number 48 on the second reading file?
One. Wait, can you?
I think I'll make the motion.
So, yes, Senator Ada, according to Senator Ada to go and make the motion then too. So Senator Ada, you're in motions?
Madam Speaker, first of all, I guess my first motion would be to to move to accept substitute Resolution 48-31. As substitute to the substitution of the original resolution.
So the motion is to accept?
My motion is to accept the substitute Resolution 48-31.
So on that motion then to accept, without any objections, so ordered?
And my
So Senator Penlinen, now he's going to make the motion to place?
And then my next motion is to place 48-31 on the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
So the Senator's going to, Senator Ada's going to, is it on the motion?
The point of order, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of order.
My point of order is that I'd like to reflect that the agenda is not complete, that the legislature received a veto message from the Governor. A Bill, Bill Number 36, that would have assisted small businesses who are negatively affected by road construction on Guam was vetoed by the Governor and as such should be reflected under motions as being received and available for an override. And so I would like to make that motion then that the agenda be corrected to reflect the presence to place that vetoed bill on the agenda under motions.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Ada, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I think in the remarks I'd like to make, I'd like to give a little bit of a chronology on the National Defense Authorization Act, why we are here today, what are the provisions of the National Defense Authorization Act that we are objecting to, and our recommendations that's in Resolution 48-31 as to how we think our concerns could be best addressed. First of all, as a matter of chronology, the National Defense Authorization Act was passed by the U.S. Congress on December 17, 2010, and it was subsequent signed into law by the President on January 7, 2011. The Guam Legislature's Committee on Utilities first became aware of the final provisions on February 14, 2011 through other information sources. Apparently, the delegate's office apparently felt that the provisions in the National Defense Authorization Act were acceptable and appropriate for Guam. Otherwise, they would have alerted Guam's leaders on this matter. Now, why are we here today? We are here today to express our viewpoints on the matter and to convey a message to Guam's delegate to Congress, the Congress, and to the federal entities involved that we strongly object to the provisions related to the potential turnover of Navy water assets to the Guam Waterworks Authority. Now, the provisions of the National Defense Authorization Act that we object to are actually two primary provisions. One is that in the event that the Secretary of the Navy chooses to turn over the Navy water assets to the Guam Waterworks Authority, and that's the permissive part of the language, he must adhere to conditions, must be satisfied. One is that the Navy water assets must be sold at fair market value to the Guam Waterworks Authority. A very conservative estimate of what this cost to the Guam Waterworks Authority would be is estimated to be around $300 million. And that's a very conservative estimate. The second provision that we are objecting to is the Navy's involvement on the Consolidated Commission on Utilities. The other condition in turning over the assets is that the Navy must have a 33% voting right on the CCU and a proportionate representation on the chairmanship. Now, our recommendation that's outlined in Resolution 48 is very simple. What we are recommendations to address our concerns. One is that our delegate to Congress introduced legislation at the earliest possible time to repeal the conditions related to the requirements for the sale of assets and the Navy's participation on the CCU. And the second recommendation is to propose that the 1992 model for the turnover of Navy power assets to GPA be reenacted. In 1992, when the Navy turned over its power assets to the Guam Power Authority, the requirement was simply that the Guam Power Authority must meet certain industrial performance standards, and upon meeting that, then the Navy would become a customer of the Guam Power Authority. That has worked well, and it has worked well for the past 20 years. And it has worked well enough that the Navy and the CCU are now in discussions, and in fact, they've actually signed a memorandum of understanding to continue taking a look at the performance standards that need to be met in order for the Navy to become a customer of the Guam Power Authority. So already, the local operators here on Guam, the Navy and CCU are already looking at the 1992 model for the turnover. And so there's certainly nothing wrong with reenacting that same model, and that's the model that should be used for the turnover of Navy assets. So, Madam Speaker, at this time, I'm going to go ahead then since I will have the closing remarks, and I'll give my closing remarks at that time, but I'll give the opportunity for other members to also voice their opinions. Thank you.
On the motion? Anyone who'd like to speak on the motion? Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes?
Situs Masie. Madam Speaker, and Manana Situas, to you and my colleagues here this morning. As we stand in rise in support of this Resolution 4-31 relative to voicing our concerns with the proposed transfer of the United States Department of Navy's Water Works Infrastructure to Guam Water Works Authority to the autonomy of Guam, Democratically-Elected Consolidated Commission on Utilities to stating unequivocally that Guam asserts the Navy Water Works Infrastructure should be transferred at no cost to Guam taxpayers and to insisting that the Government of the United States honor its reparian rights of the people of Guam over their island's freshwater resources. Madam Speaker, you and I know that for many, many years, our policymakers in this august body have talked about the God-given resource that our Heavenly Father above has provided to our people of Guam. And it has been noted by this policymaker time and time again through legislation that the water given above belongs to our people of Guam. And, Madam Speaker, as I read that resolution supporting the author, Senator Tom Ada, the good Senator from Mingila, and shared with him, I mean, and as he shared that why we need to do this resolution, I want to note that on the markup of the resolution that we're speaking on today, there was a provision that included that this I want to note it for the record because it states that just recently our Governor of Guam, Governor Calvo, during his State of the Island address on March 14, 2011, stated empathetically that the Fena Lake, the Fena Lake that belongs to the people of Guam, and that because the Fena Lake belongs to the people of Guam, Congress should not, the Congress of the United States should not make a profit out of Guam by selling to us what is rightfully ours. And whereas requiring Guam Waterwork Authority to pay fair market value for transfer of Fena Lake reservoir and all accompanying infrastructure would place an inequitable and unreasonable financial burden on current and future ratepayers and significantly hamper the authority's ability to continue investing in maintenance and capital improvement that will serve all customers, including the Department of Defense. Madam Speaker, I remember that speech very clearly. I remember that the Governor of Guam, when he said his State of the Island address on March 14, that he had a standing ovation. And you know, I know that one of our colleagues were off-island. And that's the Majority Leader, Madam Speaker, and he too said, you know, "I will not be able to return to Guam until March 23rd." But that when his colleagues consider that he make a statement of support and that it be part of the public record that he considered that we support Resolution 48. And, Madam Speaker, if I may, only because he's not here, it gives a complete sentiment of where he goes to say that this resolution is in response to an affront to the people of Guam that was placed in the United States Public Law 111-383, which became law on January 7, 2011, Section 2822 of that act that allows the Secretary of Defense to convey all right, title, and interests of the United States into the water and the wastewater treatment utility systems on Guam, including the Fena Reservoir for the purpose of establishing an integrated water and wastewater treatment system on Guam. As consideration for the conveyance of the water and wastewater treatment utility systems on Guam, the authority shall pay, the authority shall pay to the Secretary of Defense an amount equal to the fair market value of the utility infrastructure to be conveyed. The law goes on to state, as a condition of the conveyance under subsection A, the Secretary of Defense must obtain at least 33% voting representation on the Guam Consolidated Commission on Utilities, including a proportional representation as chairperson of the commission. The federal government took the land and water in question from the people of Guam by condemnation and without compensation. Now, if we want the land and water back, they're demanding that we pay full fair market value for property that was taken from us in the first place. To add insult to injury, the federal government says that they will accept as payment the in-kind services the people of Guam have already provided to our friends and neighbors, the citizens under the Compacts of Free Association. I believe this means that we can either give up the future reimbursements for the costs to the compact citizens or give up whatever federal government still owes us in impact reimbursements. In return, we got back what is already rightfully ours and we get back what the federal government condemned and took after World War II. We also get the waterworks facility located at Fena now owned by the Navy, and we would be forced to give up one-third voting rights for our Consolidated Commission on Utilities, which our people know as the CCU, including that proportional representation as chairperson on the commission to the Secretary of Defense in addition to paying fair market value. Demanding a one-third share of CCU, an independent democratically-elected body of the government of Guam does not sound like the federal government is serious about the one approach, the one Guam approach. In fact, it sounds like the federal government has not read their history or they would know that the island-wide power know that the island-wide power system has been under the CCU's, CCU's control for nearly 20 years, and the CCU has been handling the power system for the military and civilian communities for years, just as communities across the United States handles the needs of the civilians and the military living in the same districts. If we are ever truly going to be equal inside and outside the fences, the federal government will handle the water system as they did, as they did the power system in 1992, by turning it over to the government of Guam at no cost. The Secretary of Defense has been, has been, has been given the power to decide how to treat the people of Guam, and his decision will affect relations between the civilian and military communities in Guam for generations to come. According to the law, payment for the Navy's water and wastewater system is to be determined pursuant to an agreement between the Secretary and the Guam Waterworks Authority. Madam Speaker, our Majority Leader also noted that he encouraged the Secretary of Defense to study the histories and seriously consider his actions in light of the historic injustices that have been perpetrated on the people of Guam since we became the property of the United States in 1898, and that we implore the United States, the Secretary, to do what he should, to do what he knows is right for and by the forever loyal people of Guam. Anything less than that will be an affront to the history and to Guam, and an insult to every person who has ever put their hands and hearts and pledged allegiance to liberty and justice for all, because there is no justice in United States Public Law 111-383. And Madam Speaker, I too share those same sentiments, and I know that if the Vice Speaker were here also, that he would speak with the same passion and the same concern. The water belongs to the people of Guam. We have been forever patriotic to Uncle Sam, and it's high time that Uncle Sam reconsider what has been done in Public Law 111-383 without even consulting the people of Guam. I stand in support of this resolution, Madam Speaker, and I hope and pray that my colleagues truly stand in the same support as I do, and, and my colleagues who are not with us here today. Situas Massey.
Thank you, Senator Munya Barnes. On the motion, Senator Chris Duñez, your recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Resolution 48-31, and commend the author for bringing this to the floor, as it is such an important piece of legislation in the form of this resolution. And Madam Speaker, I want to start by thanking you for your address this morning. It was very passionate, especially when you described how a control of a people exists with the control of the very essence of life, and that is water. Madam Speaker, in the discussions on turnover of property and marble, the US DOE describes that the reason to take that property back is because we didn't build a school, as had been committed. But Madam Speaker, there are a number of water wells that were built up there by the people of Guam, and as I understand it, those water wells even serve the Anderson Air Force Base, our military brothers and sisters. Madam Speaker, as was alluded to earlier by the author, Senator Tom Adda, on the MOU between the CCU and the Admiral and the representatives of the Navy, there is even a provision in there where they, not like the so-called all-knowing, all-powerful, biggest minds of the most powerful country in the world, the United States, the US Congress, even they, the Admiral, the CCU, the worker bees, provide for our safety, security, and the understanding of the due process of government, understood that there are no rates set within that MOU, there are no dollar figures affixed to that MOU, because they knew. It only makes sense when you commit to a relationship, to an integration, that you don't set terms like that, that you don't force on the people and on your people in the end, because if this is truly to be one Guam in this movement forward, then the people behind the fence would be dealing with the issues and the terms and the debt service and the conditions that would be placed upon this agreement as well. There's nobody that's free from the impositions that are placed upon us. And as was really well pointed out, Madam Speaker, in the public hearing on this particular resolution, Legal Counsel Fred Herakki mentioned from PUC that this would be possibly unprecedented in terms of the federal government's involvement in local affairs. Madam Speaker, many of us have had differences on the military buildup. For obvious reasons, when it comes to financial stability, prosperity, it only makes sense to look at the so-called manna falling from heaven. We've disagreed, but on this, I think we have to agree. And I just want to point out, in closing, Madam Speaker, we consistently have these discussions and representations from the federal officials in negotiations that we want to work with you, that we want to reach out, we want to make this one Guam. Yet, when it came to the Port Authority of Guam, they had to scramble, and the Department of Defense had to come to the rescue of making sure that the $50 million available for the port to get started on the preparations for the buildup was there. Madam Speaker, in two attempts now, as close as it possibly could have gotten, on the floor, once again failure when it comes to recognizing war reparations. And Madam Speaker, the invitation by Admiral Bashan to the local officials of Guam, elected the media to meet with federal officials, was nice last Sunday, and I enjoyed myself, and I restrained myself, actually, from expressing, expressing my feelings, because just this third example, once again, of the insult placed upon the people of Guam and the lack of recognition of what such an injustice was represented in the passing of that legislation is the last kick in the teeth that I want to receive from the federal government. I not only hope that the recommendations of the good author, Senator Tom Adda, are adopted, but that the US Congress and all of the federal officials, as we move forward, if we're going to move forward, in good faith, as a partner with this military buildup, stop saying one thing on this hand and doing something on the other. Because as I told Undersecretary Works, we cannot build trust if we're constantly being dealt these blows. We asked him, Madam Speaker, when he was here, to take the list, the list we keep representing, yourself and the majority as Speaker, the minority, the same list we've been presenting to the federal government for over a decade now. Start ticking away at some of these things. Build trust in this relationship. That's all we ask. So I rise in full support of this resolution, Madam Speaker. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on it, and hopefully, with Senator Rodriguez's prayer, we can move forward with true negotiations and understanding of a true relationship between the federal government and the people of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Frank Blas?
Situas Massey, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues, good morning. Madam Speaker, I don't think there's any question in as far as my full support, I rise in full support of Resolution 48-31. And I want to commend the author, the good Senator from Mingilau, for expeditiously addressing, wanting to address this issue by drafting the legislation, and actually, as succinctly as possible, providing, as he had stated, the chronology of the events that occurred, which lead to, as this resolution expresses, our dissatisfaction and our objection to what has been now, what is now federal law. But I want to add on a little bit more to this chronology, that I think is very important for members of this body to recognize. And in one, first, I think we should recognize that in this body, this same body, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was, I think it was two legislatures ago, Speaker Ben, Speaker, the good Senator from Baragada, in his introduction and eventual unanimous passage of legislation that unequivocally stated that the waters in and around and under and over Guam belong to the people of Guam. Correct me if I'm wrong, Speaker Ben, was that 29th, 30th, 29th, when you introduced that, 29th, right? 29th. That's key, Madam Speaker, because, and I'm going to jump back and forth with regards to dates, because I think it was just a little bit more than, and correct me if I'm wrong, was it about three weeks ago, almost a month ago, when, when, when your staffer came? February 14th, Valentine's Day, of all times, when we stumbled across, as a result of tedious and fine-tooth combing of the National Defense Authorization Act of 2011, that it was found of a provision termed in the Act as the condition of conveyance. It was not till then that we were informed. It was not till then that we were made aware of that this existed in the federal law. It was not till then that we were made of that we could have, if had it been, we'd be, we'd been informed, that we could have fought for it, we could have fought against it. I've taken the liberty, Madam Speaker, to place on, and to give to every one of our colleagues, my colleagues here, a series of, or a copies of letters of my correspondence and correspondence received by me from various officials within Washington DC concerning the provision of the CCU, most specifically on the provision of the CCU or provision of the, of the NDA, that states that as a condition of the conveyance, should we decide or should we go through or continue with the transfer of the water and wastewater assets at fair market value or whatever it is, there is a condition of the conveyance that the Secretary of Defense receive at least a, at least a one-third voting seat in the Consolidated Commission on Utilities. I want you to take particular attention, Madam Speaker, if you've got a copy of this, to a copy of a press release that was provided on May 28, 2010, by a representative to Congress who, that details certain provisions in the NDA that we should be made aware of, that affect Guam. And there's a number of them. And I'd like to pay, to direct you to, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth paragraph down, it says, "It establishes clear authority for the Secretary of Defense to convey the Navy's water and wastewater system, including Fena Reservoir, to the Guam Waterworks Authority, to establish an integrated system that is civilian-run with the military as a consumer. The provision outlines that GWA would have to pay fair market value for the Navy system, but that such costs can be amortized over a 25-year period. Additionally, the Secretary of Defense, in consultation with the Secretary of Defense, must consider the value of unreimbursed compact impact costs in determining the total cost of the conveyance." It's interesting, because she found the time to be able to inform us in her press release about that. But before I go on to the interesting part, let me just express my concern with regards to the conveyance or the transfer of that, of those water systems, or the sale of those water systems at fair market value. You know, Madam Speaker, for at least the last 30 years or so, the people of Guam, because of, I guess, there's some agreement with regards to the Navy and, 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 and the Guam Waterworks System, in being able to help to supply water to the total, to the entire island of Guam, we've been buying water from them. And I, and I, I would bet you bottom dollar that as part of the funds that they, they have been receiving on their sale of our water to us, that part of that cost included the improvements and the, and the enhancements and the construction of that system. And then we're going to pay again? And then we're going to pay again? What I find very interesting also, ma'am, about that little, that paragraph in that press release is... Now I'm going to draw your attention to a copy of the actual, the provisions in, in the law that was passed out. Every, all of us have got it. With regards to the, the provision in the NDA where it is, now is as law. It's, it's entitled, subtitled, "See Provisions Related to the Guam Realignment." But if you look down at 3, Acceptance of In Kind Services, it talks, it states, "The consideration required by paragraph 1 may be paid in cash or in kind as acceptable to the Secretary of Defense. Secretary of Defense, in consultation with the Secretary of Interior, shall consider the value of in-kind services provided by the Government of Guam pursuant to Section 311 of the Compact of Free Association between the Government of the United States and the Government of the Federal States of Micronesia," on and on and on. But what I find very interesting is right below that, right below it, you can't miss it. See, Condition of Conveyance. As a condition of the conveyance under subsection A, the Secretary of Defense must obtain at least a 33% voting representation on the Guam Consolidated Commission on Utilities, including a proportional representation as chairperson of the, of the commission. This is right below it. And it's been below it, it's been there since May 27, 2010, when the Chairman of the Armed Services Committee submitted Amendment 654 that placed these provisions concerning the transfer and the sale, the assets and the condition of conveyance into the National Defense Authorization Act Bill. It's been there When did we find out about it? How did we find out about it? We found out about it on Valentine's, day of this year. From other sources. That's interesting, other sources. Because you know, Madam Speaker, interestingly enough, during the public hearing that we had for, for Resolution 48, I asked members of the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, specifically Mr. Ilar Harry and Mrs. Gloria Nelson, who are members of this committee, of this commission. First off, after they told me that they've been in the last, over the last two years, the CCU and the Navy and the Department of Defense have been in negotiations, have been in discussions on how to integrate our water wastewater systems and basically our utilities. They've been in discussions, in good faith discussions. But when I asked Mr. Harry if, if any had time during those discussions, were they ever advised, were they ever informed, did they ever discuss the possibility of not only the fair, the, the sale of those, of the water and wastewater systems at fair market value, but of the inclusion, of the assistance, of the mandate that the Secretary of Defense will have a 33% voting representation and part, be partly the Chairman of the Committee? If that was ever part of the discussions? He said, "No." In all of our discussions that we've been having with military officials and with defense officials that have been coming to Guam. And I know that in some of our discussions, we talked about the utilities, we talked about integration, we talked about being able to make sure that this is one Guam. I have never once, and I'm sure that none of my colleagues here have ever once heard them ever mention the fact that they had, they were in discussions, they were, they, they were considerations, there was consideration of that particular provisions with regards to the 33% voting representation. My colleague and the good Senator from Afamie, you know, he brought up something, trust. The last few years, we've been trying to build trust, we've been trying, we've been trying to get this together with them. So that there could be some trust in as far as our discussions and our negotiations. How can we trust a body and entity that was not going to tell us everything? That's not going to be open with us, that's not going to be upfront with us? That continues to skirt the discussions with us? That fails to inform us, that fails to fight for us? I bring you back to the copies of the letters that I provided to all of you. And a letter received by a Washington representative dated March 8, 2011. Second paragraph. "During debate on Public Law 111-383, I was successful in including a provision that for the first time ever requires the US Navy to transfer their water and wastewater infrastructure systems to the Government of Guam. My original amendment simply required the transfer of the system. During further consideration of the amendment, the Republican minority insisted the Guam pay fair mark, fair market value for the system as well as allow the US Navy to have a 33% voting representation on the board. To offset the fair market value price that the Republicans insisted on, I countered that this clause may be offset by unreimbursed impact costs. While I did not support the 33% voting representation component of the provision, I recognize that this clause can be negated through negotiations or amended if needed. However, giving the DOD the authority to negotiate the transfer of its system to Guam was an important step forward in integrating the Navy and Guam's water and wastewater systems." We're going to have to negotiate this out now? More importantly, Madam Speaker, she admits she knew about it. Why didn't she tell us? And when I say yes, I'm not just talking about this body, I'm also talking about the Consolidated Commission on Utilities. I'm also talking about the administration. Never mind who put it in. Because I told you, in Amendment 654, it was placed by the Chairman. It's law now. And my concern and my issue with regards to this particular provision of the, of what is now law is how far will this go now? What are they going to want next? Is there going to be, is there going to be legislation now in Congress? Or is it going to be a federal law that basically says, now that we're giving Guam, the people of Guam, funding to be able to make improvements in their port, therefore we want position on their port board? Are they going to say that because the FAA continues to provide funding to the airport, that they're going to want position on the airport? Are they going to say that if they're going to continue to give funding to education, that they're going to want a position on our, on the education board? Are they going to say that because of, of, of the accreditation and because of the monies and the concern with regards to healthcare in Guam, they want a position on the, on the healthcare board? Well, how far are they going to go with this? And do the research, because I've done. There's no place else in this nation where the United States, the federal government has imposed its will, has imposed itself on a, on a state or local border commission. What does that say to the relationship, our political relationship with the United States? What does that say about, to identification with them? What does that say about how much they care? You want to know why they, they are on this board, ma'am? It was very interesting, because in a, in a subcommittee hearing, in a hearing that was held before the House Armed Services Rating Subcommittee, Assistant Secretary Jacqueline Fanestil was asked the question. Why does, why does the Department of Defense, why does the Department of Defense want to be a part of the CCU? Here was her response. And I gave you a copy of that letter too. And what I did was I played that, it was on C-SPAN, and I want to thank the good Senator from PD, although he's not here, we've excused him, Senator BJ Cruz, because all the way from Los Angeles, he was, he and I were in communication, he says, "You got to listen to this." So I played that over and over again, just to make sure that I get this verbatim. When asked on the thinking of DOD in requiring a voting member on the CCU, she stated, "That requirement there is based on the need to make certain that operational standards are met." Two things, Madam Speaker. One, I trust in the ability of our Consolidated Commission on Utilities. They have been able to work despite all the adversities, the, all the challenges, in, in making sure that our island's water and wastewater system and our power system continues the enhancements, the improvements, and the reliability. I will stand in support and I can support them. And to infer and to say that they do not have the capability of being able to ensure that their, the operational requirements of the military are met. What is the difference between their operational requirements and what our people of Guam should expect? That Consolidated Commission on Utilities, Madam Speaker, was a commission that was, that was created by this body for the purposes of, of continuing the improvements, the enhancement, making sure that our people of Guam, the people of Guam, inclusive of everybody, military and civilian alike, receive the best water, wastewater, power, utility, infrastructure system that we, we can provide. That's a commission, Madam Speaker, that its membership is selected by a democratically, by democratic vote by the community. Each of its members. So if we have to give the Department of Defense 33% voting right, a seat on the board, who's going to go? Who's going to make that determination? But the second reason, the second concern I had with that statement is, they knew about it. Going back to the trust, to the good faith negotiation, to the good faith conversations, that flies right in the face of that. I stand here, Madam Speaker, to tell you, inform you, and to tell you and the rest of my colleagues here, this has got far-reaching effects, more so than just 33% on that board. It is once again the federal government imposing its will on the people of Guam without the benefit of the people of Guam to be able to discuss, deliberate, argue, defend And I got to say, Madam Speaker, and to no offense and not to degrade in as far as all of our efforts and our continuous efforts and the efforts in this resolution to make our, our, our feelings known, our sentiments known with regards to this or any other issue that we put in resolutions, but you know, Madam Speaker, let's be honest with ourselves. How effective have our resolutions been? How many more times are we going to have to continue to cry and to beg and to demand and on a piece of paper that a lot of times you and I both know they don't even read? I seriously think, Madam Speaker, that we've got to do something more drastic. This is 1949 repeating itself all over again. And if we don't do anything about it now, if we just sit back and just let this happen, if we don't somehow send a clear message, not a message of ampututism, not a message of disloyalty, but a message that of we are just as human with the rights and the respect and the dignity expected of any human. And that we should be, if we're going to, if you continue to say that we are as part of this American fabric of their family, have the rights and, and the duty and the opportunity to be able to shape, to help to shape our future, then we have to be heard. I hope, Madam Speaker, that our actions based on the actions of the federal government, all-inclusive, go further than just this. We need to send a clear message. Because if we sit back and we just let this happen and we rely on people that say, "Yeah, yeah..." and we rely on people that say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we hear you." They've been saying that for decades. Then we take the example, we use the example that was laid down, that was set forth by our forefathers in this very body in 1949 to send that message. I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for, and my colleagues, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. To all my colleagues and to the people, this is not a partisan thing. This is not about being Republican or Democrat. This is about our identity as a people. This is about protecting what is, what rightfully belongs to our people, whether it be the waters. Before I end, let me explain to you insofar as the significance of why I brought up and as far as the good speaker from Baragada and his legislation on the 29th. They have had four years to contend to say that that legislation or that law that this body enacted was null and void. They've had four years to say something about that. Matter of fact, the organic tax gives them that power. And how do they choose to retort it? By not having the, not having the Kahuna's, not having the adept, the bravery to be able to come to us and to tell us, to discuss with us, that they were going to impose their will and their membership on a board, on one of our boards, and they were going to, they were going to mandate us to buy what is rightfully ours and to purchase something that we've already helped to build? So again, I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to thank my colleagues for listening and to following along. I want to thank the author and his staff for recognizing this and seeing the urgency of being able to put this together. And I'm asking my colleagues, please, let there not be any doubt in your mind of your support for this resolution. And that we've got to be able to do more than just this resolution, to send the message that we have to send, we have to send now. We can't wait. Because as was stated by our illustrious congressional delegate, we're going to have to negotiate out. And if we negotiate out, if we have to negotiate out this, then what other things that we feel that is more important for our people, what other things that our people want for us to be able to fight for? What are those things that we cannot now negotiate because we're using that chip for this one? This is a perfect opportunity for us, or we can negotiate this out. We shouldn't have never had to go down that road had we been informed in May of last year. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Last on the motion, Senator Guthrie, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Resolution 48 is very important at this time. As Chair of the Committee on the Guam Military Build-Up, I must let you and our colleagues know that I was very distressed when I learned of this provision in recently passed federal legislation and the impact that it would have on local institutions, particularly the legislative-created Consolidated Commission on Utilities with reference to by law, federal law, being required to have three members come from the ranks of military community and a portion of the chairpersonship in addition to being told that we can have FINA back if we pay for it. Now, I must tell you that the last, close to three years has been quite a challenge for many of us in interacting with our friends from the military side in charge of the promotion of the buildup on Guam, representatives from the Jigpo office, and of course directly from the Department of Defense and other federal agencies. Many of you here have participated in meetings that we've had with Department of Defense officials, up to and including the second person in charge of the department, Mr. Lynn, Undersecretary Works, Assistant Secretary Plantersfield, Secretary Robyn, all the way down to the numerous others, assistant secretaries that have been brought to Guam to talk to us about the buildup and never really say much about the buildup in the process, just wanting to hear from us. This development that caused us to prepare this resolution is quite startling. To be frank with you, I don't think certain members of Congress get it. You know, to place in federal law provision that basically wipes out the autonomy of our local government is unprecedented. We've had many challenges with the federal government, we've dealt with them over the years, and we still have many challenges. But this one's really a first. A federal law that tells the people of Guam, "We're coming in, one of your locally-created commissions, and we're going to vote on those commissions." Now, there's no question that obviously the military would be very concerned to ensure the reliability and the responsiveness and the efficiency and the effectiveness of the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Water Works Authority. But ladies and gentlemen, the military have been on Guam since 1898. The local government, with the transfer of GPA and generally Water Works itself and the phone services and other things to us from the military over the years, we've provided the services. GPA provides services to the military just as it does to the rest of the island. We've not had problems. But now, things are changing. At least based on this federal law, I don't think Congressman Skelton realized what he did when he put this provision in federal law. I don't think he knows Guam's history as well as he said he did when he came here and spoke to us over a year ago. Now, whether you look at it symbolically or operationally or from the perspective of autonomy, perspective of state rights, even though we're not a state, this is unprecedented. And this law must be amended. I expect our Congresswoman to immediately act to amend the law and remove this provision in the Congress. That's her responsibility. Frankly, I'm surprised that we were not informed about this by the Congresswoman's office when it first happened. I don't understand that. We learned about it secondhand. If I would have been in that Congress, Madam Speaker, I would have objected whether in the committee, the Defense Authorization Committee, or anywhere else. I would have objected to this provision and I would have explained what this does to our local government and institutions. You know, I thought about this all night and I asked myself, "Well, what are the implications of this beyond the CCU?" Wow. What if the Congress passes the law and says, "Well, we want to make sure that the interests of the military is really protected on Guam when we have this buildup, so we're going to pass now a law that says six positions in the legislature shall be reserved for military representatives." Conceivably, they could do it. They did it for the CCU. They could do it for the legislature, they could do it for the Department of Education, for the school board, they could do it for the hospital board. They could say, "We want the lieutenant governor's position to be a position for a military official." Or higher if they want. We have a responsibility to act on this measure, not just this resolution. I would even go to court if I could to challenge this, and we may need to do it. What are we? Yes, we're an unincorporated territory, and basically that means we are a creation of Congress. Unincorporated territory means, in reality, quote-unquote, "No promise of change" in terms of your political status, that the United States government is not obligated to change anything with reference to our identity as a political entity. But I don't think that's what it wants to be known for. I cannot believe the United States would not want to continue working with the territory so that we improve our status and move ahead on the status issue, but this particular provision of federal law is a great setback. It challenges our identity as a government. It challenges our identity as a part of the United States. It challenges the authorities of this legislature, the authorities of the governor, the authorities of the CCU, the identity of the entire island. What the hell are we? I don't think Mr. Skelton, by the way, he's no longer in the Congress, so we can't write to him and say, "Please repeal this provision." But I don't know what he was thinking and if he got the proper advice with all those highly-paid experts in the Congress, the consultants there. Someone should have told him, "Don't do this." But somebody planted this idea in his head. I believe it. Probably someone from the military who really was overly concerned about protecting their interests with reference to our water system, our wastewater system, our power system, whatever. But this is not the right thing to do. No community in the United States would allow this, Madam Speaker. And we cannot just sit back and say, "Okay, we have no choice, it's federal law, we have to do it." I don't agree with that. And as buildup chair, I will not accept that. And I know you won't either, my colleagues won't either. We have to stand up and say, "No, this is wrong." Because if you do it for the CCU, they'll do it for other things. And our people, all the people that call Guam home, will lose their voice in this community, they'll lose their representation in the affairs of this government if we allow this to happen. Congressman Bordalio, if you are watching these proceedings, please, you must act quickly to change this. We will do our part, but it's your responsibility. You represent the people of Guam, the United States Congress. You cannot allow this to remain in law, in federal law. You know, I was one of the original members of the CCU. I was elected to the CCU and took office on January 3rd, 2003, when we had no power or water. We had just gone through a typhoon. And throwing it on our laps was this catastrophe. How to get the water back, the power back? You know, it was real difficult. But we worked hard with the employees at GWA and GPA. We brought in the management and we were able to do it. We did it. From the very beginning, the CCU has proven it has the ability to meet the needs of this community when it comes to water, wastewater, and power services. They've come a long way. And when I talk about the community, I'm talking about the entire community, everybody that calls Guam home, including our military community. Because my philosophy is one island, one people, one quality of life for everyone. Now, if our military friends don't trust us, then we should not have the buildup here. Because that's what they're saying to us through this congressional action, that we don't trust the CCU, we don't trust the people of Guam to be able to keep the water on and the power on. What is that? Come on. So they want to have members on the CCU? I welcome them to get elected. Come to Guam, register to vote, campaign, and get elected to the CCU. It's a nonpartisan office. But don't come in and try to grab seats. That's not how it's supposed to work, Madam Speaker. There's a right way to do things and a wrong way to do things. This federal law is the wrong way. You've heard Senator Spisho's remarks. He feels very strongly about this, he took the time to write down his thoughts and to share them with you, and I'm very pleased that our colleague Senator Barnes shared them with all of us in this hall as well as the people of Guam. Senator Cruz, I hate to tell you what Senator Cruz said, but come on. It's like, you know, pulling the rug from under your feet and saying, "You're not good enough, so we have to watch you." enough, so we have to watch you. We have to protect our interests." Ladies and gentlemen, our interests are the same interests as that of the United States military. We want to have a strong military. We want to have a good military buildup here. We want our military community to share with us in helping to make Guam a great place. But not this way. This is not right. We say enough is enough, and Tagalog, they say "tamana," no more. Tomorrow, I'd say "sus maria, Josef." Can't believe it.
"Sus maria, Josef?"
Yeah. Well, I know what it means, but to me, it's like saying, "My God, sus maria, Josef." I know, I know. That's my religious reaction to this.
"Basta, diva."
I know, "basta." "Sus maria, Josef." "Santeria, Jesus." No more, Mr. Speaker. Please, let's be unified in this situation here, and let's turn this around. Now, Congressman Bernalio, please, do your part. That's your job. Correct this now. We'll do our part. Like I said, I'm really, really willing to go to court, federal court, and say, "What the hell are we here?" What is an unincorporated territory if the federal government can come and say, "We're taking these seats from you on the CCU"? Then what does that say about what we are? Who's going to take us seriously in the world community if this was what happens? Now, on the other issue of having to pay for FINA? Come on. Like many lands on Guam, FINA was stolen from the people of Guam. FINA belongs to the people of Guam. Okay, the military's used it for a while. Fine, okay, we understand. But we shouldn't have to pay to get it back. And by the way, their infrastructure's not so hot anyway for the FINA reservoir. Our GWA infrastructure's better than theirs. We shouldn't have to pay to get it back. We didn't have to pay for GPA infrastructure when it was returned to us, or turned over to us by the military. Why should we have to pay for FINA? We have more important things to do with that money. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm not going to prolong this, but we have to be proactive on this. The first way to handle this is for that to be repealed. That provision must be repealed in federal law. If that's not going to move forward, then we have to go to court to challenge this. Because I said, I said earlier, "First the CCU, what next? What next?" Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Guthrie.
Thank you, Speaker. Mr. Speaker? I rise in support of Resolution 4831, and I definitely commend the author, as well as my fellow colleagues who had spoken up regarding the support of this resolution. One thing that I reflected on when I spoke with my fine colleague from Baragada, I think there's something even bigger than this, a bigger than what was brought here this morning. This particular legislation, federal legislation, really sets an alarming precedence. And if, in fact, we are part of the nation, then I believe that, Mr. Speaker, and our Madam Speaker, that we need to communicate with our other state legislators, that this is something that is alarming, that has set a precedence that they need to be aware of. It is an affront to our democratic process. And if we, in fact, want to have a stronger voice, not only just on Guam, but nationwide, that we should be able to reach out to our fellow leaders out there as well, to alert them that this is something that's going on, that this could happen within your community, and that we will not be tolerating it here in Guam. So, this states, this sets a terrible precedence, and I ask for the support of the Speaker and my fellow colleagues, perhaps write, put something together that we can communicate with our other state leaders. And again, I rise and I support 4831, Resolution 4831. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Mabini. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, please, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Senator. There were moments last night when I was thinking about this whole issue that I'd actually start laughing, because the whole notion of us paying for our water is really hilarious. And then, as I thought more and more about it, I'd start crying, because how sad is this whole situation? And as I sat, as I listened to your introduction, and as I listened to every senator take a turn in speaking, I echo everything that they have said. It's real clear that every senator, every person's representative in the 31st Guam Legislature seriously represents the issues and the concerns of all of our people. The quality of life, where we need to get, and how we need to get there. All of these issues about how Congress has decided that we're going to pay for our water, that they're going to move into our board, echoes one more time how our political status issue needs to be addressed. We need to get to a place where our voice makes a difference, where we have voting rights, where we're not simply a name on a roster. Our political status must be addressed immediately. And I know we have colleagues in this legislature where that is a high priority item. I thought last night about how thousands of years ago, in our early Tramor history, that all written accounts talk about the Magallahis, and about how they were so concerned about external forces influencing the way we are, from beliefs to practices to pesticides, even. Then I thought about how the birth of America was about pockets of people saying, "We're not being represented. You cannot make a decision for us." And that went from taxation to religion. And I thought about how all of America has evolved, and how pockets of people, over and over, have stood and said, "I count. My voice counts, and you shall not disregard me." And it takes pockets of people to realize what is wrong and what is right. I'm very proud to be a member of this body who continues to say what is right and what is wrong. And I certainly, certainly agree with the minority leader when he says we need to start doing things differently. The messages need to be bolder, we need to be smarter, and we need to be dramatic. Because as much as I have read, and as smart, and as together as the legislature has been, we haven't had our message heard. We've gotten tidbits here and there. They've said, "Okay, this, okay, that, okay." But overall, we are not being listened to, we are not being held in high regard, we are not being considered a true partner in the changing landscape of our island. That's clear. Now, perhaps they're not really paying attention. Perhaps they don't really care. Perhaps this whole notion of trust that we believe is important really isn't all that important to them, because they already know what's going to happen. We are a short blip. We are 30 miles long, maybe. But I remind myself over and over again, because of all of the conversations, we are an important 30 miles of people. Else, we wouldn't be in discussions of anything. But we are of significance, our island is, and we have grown very quickly in many, many ways. But our people count, and our rights count. And as we look around, and to be honest, as we look around to where we have arrived as far as leadership goes, we have third parties taking care of our trash, taking care of parts of DOE, and taking care of mental health. And I suggest that we do, as leadership goes, need to become bolder and smarter. We need to hold everybody accountable, ourselves and those of us who are running our island. And we need to be unified, and we need to say, "This is what we need to do. This is what we insist upon. This is where we need to get, and this is how we need to get there." We're talking about our people. And as the previous speaker talked about, it's about our identity. It is our identity. And to many across the country, it's just Guam. And as been repeated many times, many people don't even know where we are. Many people consider us the home of the brown tree snakes. We need to do much more. And I think there is hope. Well, I know there is hope. You, very quickly, when this came to your attention, you made it an issue. You made it a priority item. We were called to session today to address this. Your leadership does make a difference. The Speaker did that. And I suggest that we really need to continue with a passion, come up with a plan, be bolder, be smarter, and be dramatic. Because this 30-mile-long piece of land is significant. You want to come to our home? You got to play by our rules. We have a lot of work to do, and we must unify as an island. We must be smart, and we must be bold, and we must be dramatic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Senator Anthony Etta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker. First, I'd like to thank my good colleague from Manila for introducing this piece, for this resolution. You know, for, I go back to my days of serving in the U.S. Army. For six years, I served our country. And we have been taught that it's about freedom and democracy that we fight for. Freedom and democracy. What kind of democracy is that, that the Congress imposes on us, when they want to take a portion of a leadership by just walking in? What kind of freedom is that as a people? American at that, that we are, what is that to us, that they just do as they please? It was the United States that wanted Guam. They wanted Guam to be a part of them. We are so proudly a part of them. But the conditions they impose on us as a people is truly unfair. We go into different countries, Iraq, Honduras, Panama, and we fight there for their freedom and their democracy. When we go and we go into war and we destroy a country, the United States turns around and rebuilds that country with no strings attached. But yet, when it comes to us, a part of the United States, we have all kinds of strings attached to our freedom and our democracy. Is this what it means to be an American people? Is this what it means to be part of America? If so, then I think there's a lot of people that need to really think about whether this is what they truly want, is freedom and democracy is in its present form. It seems to me that a lot of people in Congress are very uninformed about Guam. You got people saying that Guam's going to tip over. You got people saying that they just want to put a member of the Secretary of Defense have a one-third voting right on the CCU. I think they need to, we need to turn the tables around and see how these congressmen and women in their jurisdictions would like it if they imposed that in their jurisdictions, where they just walk in and say the Secretary of Defense will have a one-third voting Being a part of the United States of America is something to be truly proud of. But why do they have two different classes of citizens? Two different classes of people? And in mainland United States, you have all rights and privileges. On Guam, you're lucky if you have rights and privileges. We always fight for what is right and what we truly believe in. The forefathers of the United States, they did not envision this to where you will come in and dictate as to what part of the government you want. They made it so that every citizen of the United States can live freely. Every citizen, not just those that are on the U.S., but because the United States wanted Guam to be a part of the United States, that means us too. And we truly need to start looking at the direction we want to go for the people of Unincorporated territory? I don't think anybody else is classified as an unincorporated territory. What are we a part of? Are we one of the war trophies that they put under their belt and they demand what it is they want to do here? We need to step back, look at what we have, look at where we want to go, and when we move forward, we need to move forward as a united body. No Democrats, no Republicans, just united as one. Because it seems to me that it's now the United States versus Guam. What are they going to do if we don't put the Secretary of Defense a one-third voting member on the CCU? Have the Air Force and the Navy escort his representative to the CCU and have the military police stand guard? What is he going to do? Have the United States President turn around and declare war on Guam? I think it's not us here on Guam that needs to be educated. It's the people of Congress that needs to be educated about what Guam is and who Guam is, and who we are as a people. Because they're forgetting, every single person that is a part of the United States migrated from different parts of the world, and that's what makes the United States what it is today. So the government that governs us, that literally wants to step on us on how they move forward, is the same government that's made up of people that were from different ethnicities, different backgrounds, different race, different creeds. They need to go back and remember what it was like to where they came from. Because some of them seem to forget their roots. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Resolution 4831. And I ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Etta. Uh, Senator Tyeran, you're recognized.
Hafadeh, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, it's just coincidental that just last night I was helping my daughter with her homework that dealt with democracy and the democratic process. And it's just so, uh, it raises the question, what does this say about our democratic process? Apparently, we should stop teaching it in our schools because it doesn't apply here. It raised such a concern for me to see that the federal government is trying to force their way into our elected body, the CCU. Like my colleague had asked earlier, what's next? Are we going to have to make room in this legislative hall for their representation in here? You know, the federal government continues to show a lack of respect for our elected bodies, and I've said this before. And they show a lack of respect for the people who have put us in office. And then we have our elected representative in Congress who says that we can negotiate our way back to, uh, to claim our Fena Lake, which rightfully belongs to our people. Aren't we tired of negotiating? We've seen how these negotiations have gone. We've been negotiating the pocket issue, blood, sweat, and tears to get somewhat of what we wanted in that respect. We continue to negotiate war reparations and compact impact. Aren't we tired? I think our people are tired of negotiating, fighting for what belongs to us. Let's stop negotiating. You know, I have to say, as a freshman senator, this is awe-inspiring to see that this body can come together regardless of parties, regardless of color or creed. We come together to represent the people of Guam. As one Guam, we come together. And I would like to see us continue to fight to protect what's ours. And so I rise in full support of this resolution, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Senator Tyeran. On the motion, Senator Rodriguez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I, um, sat and listened to all the, um, the voices of our colleagues here, which I support. And I rise in support, of course, of Resolution 48. But Madam Speaker, what what I think is very important here is that how many times have our leaders been to Washington DC? How many codails have we brought to Guam? And up to this day, we still don't have that respect. We still haven't got that message across that our people need to be respected. And actions such as what was done by US Congress in bullying their way in, is not the way to treat our people, not the way to treat the people of Guam. And you know, perhaps, Madam Speaker, this is something, that's something where we have to, to sit down and, and reevaluate on what kind of message it is that we are sending to the federal government. I think, you know, when they come before us and, and they speak to us in front of the cameras, it's one thing. But once they leave our island and they're back there in Washington DC, thousands of miles away, it's another. So I think that's something that this, um, this issue will, at least for me, will, will bring to light and will bring the importance of us now coming together and seeing, reevaluating how it is we are sending that message. So again, I, um, I rise in support of Resolution 48. And I'm hoping that this, this is a strong, um, message, one of the strong messages, because we've been sending a lot, that the people of Guam need to be respected. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. I think we've exhausted everyone's floor, except, of course, yes, I have here. I just want to make sure that there is no one else who would like to speak. Uh, so Senator Pangu, then you are recognized on the motion.
Sidoos maasi, Madam Speaker. Manana sidoos para'au, dan todin mangaii pau'au gwinin'ogan. Uh, antes de bel tutun, mi explica hafa sin intekku pudestina manera zauna be'au muewui na be'au mana apenda ina onu ginigi resolution zan kunto si Senator Samabini. Was, uh, eno manu.
Taigu, taigu nanu?
Taigu nanu?
Taigu lakit.
Oi.
Yep. Ti ma'porlu nanu.
So thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I begin, um, expressing my feelings on the resolution and the matter contained in the resolution, I'd like to make a motion to add my name and Senator Mabini's name and your name, I understand, also on the resolution as co-sponsors.
Motion without any objection, so order. Wa'ahu ma's papak numero, uh, Kinzi. And the motion without objection, so order it.
Sidoos maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if we look at who's responsible for this amendment, I've got the culprit. His name's Frank Blas Jr. He's responsible for this. I remember when we were having a discussion about how to get what we deserve from the federal government. And one of the issues, of course, is this unreimbursed compact impact. And we had this idea, we discussed it, and I like the idea, that we should be able to get credit on the unreimbursed portion of the compact impact on a cash matching requirement for federal grants. So that if the federal government is going to give us a grant of a million dollars and they require a local match of another million, fifty-fifty, that we take it out of that reserve called unreimbursed compact impact, put up that million, and they give us the million, and we've satisfied the matching requirement without having to come up with the cash for our current operations. That way, it doesn't affect our ability to continue to operate, provide services to our people. That was the idea behind using this unreimbursed compact impact. It's to offset a cash requirement, not to take it and go and buy what belongs to us already. Frank, you had to make that pretty clear. I don't know what happened there. But it goes to show you, Madam Speaker, that it's the devil is in the details when it comes to dealing with the federal government. It's like the programmatic agreement. The details in that programmatic agreement, I don't care in its percurrent form with all these promises of a billion dollars to Guam because we signed this agreement. I didn't even see the word billion in that programmatic agreement. This promise that we're going to get twelve million dollars of a curation facility for our history and the culture that we will destroy when we allow this military expansion, it's not in the programmatic agreement. So when we say that we have to be careful of the federal government officials, we have to be careful of our own officials who will sell us out. That's what happened. The federal government just came and told the governor, don't worry, you're going to get a billion dollars. They didn't say it's a billion dollars for all these US contractors. Okay, okay, I'll sign it. Manu gatu. Don't worry, we're going to give you twelve million dollars for a curation facility. Okay, okay, okay. Malak, malak, filmalat. Antes di'tulaika ina sunya. Sign it before they change their mind. Then I go back and I look in the programmatic agreement, I do word search. Tauta twelve million? Tauta curation facility ungan? Linga be'au faisin'i congressu. The same Congress, we're battling with this. That's the promise they make. We'll go to Congress and we'll ask the Congress to give us twelve million so we can give it to you. We have to be careful of our own leaders, Madam Speaker. This was passed by Public Law 111 dash whatever. It should be Public Law 666 because landne, it's a devilish of a damn provision in this authorization. Tungu, Madam Speaker, you know, gua'ajinai palabra ni linga. Ay, adai kula ne'zi monu nodia siga gua'tugidi ridau. You know, salt to the wound. No, 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 no. Binakli gua'tugiri dau. It's vinegar to the wounds because it, it's bitter. It's not salty, it's bitter. This is a bitter pill to swallow, and we're not going to swallow it, this provision. You know, Madam Speaker, there's one thing though in here that I see maybe a window of light. You know, it says that we can pay it for in-kind service, and then they go on about, oh, tau se compact impact unreimbursed, maybe we can do. I'll tell you what. I'll tell you what in-kind service we can just give to that Secretary of Defense. How about all the medals of our Tamoro soldiers? All the coffins that draped their, all the flags that draped their coffins when they came home in coffins? How about we give him that for Fena? How about that? Doesn't that count for anything? Because that's, as the retiring speaker who spoke about serving in the military, isn't that what that purpose was for? Isn't that why our soldiers go to the battlefield? The only thing that comes back is their medals and their coffins? Natipudhenu naman man seset bistia? Ti sinyan, mayla zata no'i ma'sia, umua. Umua ta nisisita. Umua na bandera nitu mampi ata u. Sin da lunguan, guahon niu monu zaga mera para isti. Igubenota. Umua na bandera. Umua na milonza. Datano'i di Secretary of Defense. Uh, stigia posu para Fena. Na la'lu. Empasit na la'lu. Datali fan hofu ma'sangan. Kouti na no'anga. Ti na'hu ne'zu. Taiha gamatanya. Madam Speaker. Manano manai tempo. Lo manano ta tina su. Edzu na nisisita ta fan natsu. Dataspiya. Na antis, antis di'ta fan ana'umu na ta'alu didi gwinina tempo. Ni para ta fan mahofu da gwinigi tanu ta nitautauta nu. Antis di'ta tsogui nu. Mayla zata ditinmina para hita na maisa. Hafa na klosi. Ta imanui gan man ma'ta'tsu ni popa ko'uma stakilu yu nu pa diotru. Angi ta diskuti para monu mu'na cita gwinigi. Halum familiya na mirikunu. Angin magoi na man familiya. Pad man bastad duet. Ko man bastad duet, man ma'daptai. Hafa, hafa sta'uta. Antis di'ta fan ana'umu na nitaliina siga malufan monu na tempo. Zagi magoi ta fan man lamaulik. Manano ta tit para totti. Ani imostakilu para gui no betna tau dui tau tau Guam. Imostakilu na marinu ya meronti gui ni. Manano ta tit gui. Edzige esti para cita. Timu na na totti. Estam unazan edzu. Estam alufan enu na klosi nina su. Ni para hoku, pon ditinmina. Sapudi hoku ni gaigi fetsa. Tempungira inu ni bali fetsa. Ti tempun demokrasia. Solu lelek mu'ne. Namang ge'gerai gui ni. Itautauta nu. Zani gubenon na mirikunu ni para taspiya. Hafa di'ricota gui ni ita nota. Za'un gan. Anum faisin'tautauta gi huzu ni tau tau nu. Kulamang ge'gerai. La tu dui tempo ta keke defendi. Hafa po'uma tsuli gini ni hita ni ti. Edzun ya. Tipudet ya. Napu di'a di'tauta pu di'a di'tautauta nu. Kadat dia mang ge'gerai. Ti hita. Kunto wa'alu ku'sha otus tau gui. San lagu. Mari kugnini sana isti fedi rot. Ti tu di'tempu. Mana migu zaman. Gatsu ni. Lelekta na, guana masanganiu ma'faisinu sia ni isti siai tau tau ta gui ni. Linga hafa bena ti, ti talili'au gi ulu gi, gumat meronti ya na baba'i, gumo'na ya zaka'umbi da tu di'man mo'gas. Hafa na tauta stego mu'VIP pass para holum gini gi besnia. Sa una la'lu ne'yan ni man ho'yu. Le ku sa, tipu di'tauta ni gaigi gui. Gumoguti ipuesto. I hafa ipuesto arreprese senta kontra itautauta. Po sen le'nyan mayla ulu zata guputza. Ta famoka gini gi ta'ti ra. Un sinyan na atan popa tu'uru ri bu ni tunguam sa bu ni tutu na view. Hafa ju arreprese senta nei zaga be'au no'ulu gui zabe na, ma'ulik sinin tenya sa ubisita gui ulu. Ti sinyan nei. Ti sinyatara gua'au nei. Ti sinyabiyo na'umadza izi na klosi be'au no'zabe. Fanitava nguput. Po's, po'uma tsotso gui taigu ni. Sa arreprese senta i gubenu ni perotso gui taigu ni. Wa'guan le'nyan ya meronti malafan bena ta fanunu nu ma'sianu. Manu fresku gi popa gi ta'singan, banti sinyabiyo dalag gui. Lo le'nyan fatu ulu gui ni gi gumau. Ni u'gogotisti itautauta. I tanu itautauta nu. Sa, mun'azu sumaga gi popa gi naval stationista gaigi na inzili. Isti ia imostakilu na huxu gui zaguam ni sinyawa atan popa. Stigia malago'una be'au saga. Ti sinyana be'au hanau gulu gui. Ti sinyabiyo zabe'alu. Tsak mu tsotso gui istilo mayla zata gupun na dos. Para gua'au nei. Eni gi nasosoku sia. Eni itudu wahasu. Signifikasyon ya nei i hafa tsotso gui. Zani ngaya nei zan meronti na u. Ti usentungu. Hafa nu inasosoku zan istau. Kontra i adi arreprese senta. Ti kontra gui zah na kontra hadi arreprese senta. Atan asti. Atan asti. I lenga na. Nisisita. Upega tau tau nya. Ufattsung gui gi consolidated commissions o manasi guru. Na maulik. Monu i po ma maneya. So siguru na maulik isid bisiu. Da ni. Angenau gi manerani hanu zani. Po managoska si hanu ni umbaplaca. Lo. Atan fan, atan ta'ti zan aten zi. Guahanu maproponi para MOU. Ta lu. Kontra i militat. Zani para ta'accepta. I basulania. Man malagu na. Uma'usa izi nuebu na. Sagambasula gi zalezon. Para tamano'i ni basulania zahita. Lo, ti lenga, da ni no'ya fan nu. Na siguru na sinya lo ki'ami nu guanu. Boys momi gi para. Na siguru na maulik i basula nu nisibih tau du. No? They wanna make sure they sit on the CCU so that it can be operated and meet performance standards. But when they want an MOU to give us their trash to accepting the dump, they're not asking that, hey, you better manage the dump and make sure it's good and you don't pollute the water and all that. They're not saying, give me a seat on your, you know, your solid waste authority because I wanna make, no, just take my trash, don't worry about it. I feel good, you can manage the trash. You can't manage the water, but you can take my trash. I'm not even gonna demand that I have one-third nu seat on your solid waste authority. Just take this trash. Hafa nu na klosi. Un li na una klosi ninasu. Ti uma afaksa sia. Guan loku guini ma ga tsungu lenga. Nisisita ta'fan. Tamos. You know, tinahungi para ta'fan atungua zata'fan. Aguti konu, tinahung. Estan ya nu. So, angin ma songan na la'ani sa. Illehis latu ratalu kulan mumumu zani. Congressional, congressional delegate di delega duta guatu gi zah Washington. Kulantima na afaksa tai manu mu na. Isti demokrasia nu ti kumekelengya na. Para tau du du swabi. Ile lenga na Debbie Sempridi guahinasu sia ma diskuti. Datali'i monu ni gaigii. Nisinya man ludgun. Aswas ti. Nisti lekta, oh, nisisita. Mayla zata be'wano zata be'wokumplosi. Be'wokumplosian meronti ya lenga mayla zu zata. Angin nu kumplosi sinya kumplosi zu. Da ni, kuakotinli guini gi ma'pu nasokan. I congressional watch. Na lenga na. Imu represe senta gi zah Washington gui zah masmegai gi naston ya. Para nenkanu entertainment. Functions. Zani lenga oftai manu lenga sa. Kadat akun ni mogi i. Man ga tsungya sia gui gi United States Congress. Porofanu ini tau tau ta. Porofanu i na. Man maulikin na tau tau gui ni zati man ma tratratai. Pareo zani pumalu. Pus ta'guputi gi tu lovers poi. Ta'punu i babu zata biru, ta'ke'lagui ni kofa sia. Ta'ba'ilazi. De istigi. Man mano'i ta'ti. Mulinga munanta isalogi zata protests. Datali'i na. Ungan man na lolu zalenga, ah, nenota guan na. Lo, takumplosia da'ina dong kulunguputsia. Adaina complimentu izu sia. Mid put mid put mid ta'gosta tan afan. Maguv gui ni, malingi kutro ta'tu du. Zalugot. Uma biru ta'ti mina'ulik. Stigi man ma sedbit mogi. Stigi na ta'ga gi gi luplotu. Ni manalalu. Basta na zan na. Sitata hasu dinuebu na. Ko magoi na na gaibali zu na klosi. Pat ta'fan ogi zata'fan fitmi. Gi hafa di nansi dan di retsu. Zama sia ti pogwa. Lo semprion dia minus pogu. Tanadinansi sti. Antiparahita puis para ifamagunta. Lo ta'za masipuntanti. Speaker ni ta'atan isti. Dataspia empehu. Za ontis di ta'tu laika. I hafa para tam fofana. Na direkshon. Nisisita ta'nasiguru hadzi para ginia monu guatu. Na enu na diretsu. Diretsu ni tau 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 nu. Enu na decision. Decision ni tau 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 nu. Enu. Nisisita ta'nakabalis na zan. Ontis di ta'sigia man man fitma. Datano'i ni esti, tano'i ne'ezu, cho'ui sti, cho'ui zu. Zapuisan motui tempo. Ni para tano'i mon, tano'i i famagunta zani tau tau ta. Ni esti itanu i man chamoru. Ni diretsu niya. Hoku kista sa tapatintio sa tano'i tau du du ipumalu. Sa enigi ginagoniya. Zati manogit fitmi. Na ta'za sinya ma pati gui ni. Dan ta'za sinya ma moti gui ni. Ni esti itau tau tau nu. Na itau tau tau nu fune ni na. Dongkulu na. Suputti gaigizu guini guini esti na resolution. Guini nenu na inasu. Na munga ma hasu ta'ti. Mungan ma bumira ta'ti gui gi hagas. Mayla zata taspiya. Hafa fu mafa na'it guini gi ma'maila na tempo. Datato'ui di nansi. Para hita zani famagunta ni porfan. Ta'fan tinatizi guini gi na tau nu. Madam Speaker, zawat na. Be'wofarmatinas ma sia dos tres kwatu granu na amendments. Guini gi esti imaproponi. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion. To make a couple of amendments. On the title of the. Of the resolution. Where it says relative to voicing concerns with the proposed. I would just propose the language that would strike out the word concerns. And just put relative to voicing the sense of illehis latu ranguan. With the proposed transfer of the United States Department of the Navy Waterworks. So would be to strike out the word concern and just the sense of illehis latu ranguan. And that way. Then all of the matters related in that would be our expression of that. And so, concerns may be just a little bit too limiting, I think, with regards to. The whereases and the resolved clauses.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker. Another amendment I'd like to make is. Is on. Page eight. On line 26. After the word Guam. With the law's governing disposal of excess federal property in Guam.
Ta'za 26, page eight.
Page eight?
Page eight.
The marked up copy, I guess?
Yes, oh, substituted copies what I have.
A substituted.
As substituted.
Then parentheses showing markup.
Oh, you just say markup, it just says as substituted. Oh, it's there. Oh, there's an, okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, okay, got that now then. Okay, page, okay, so page eight.
Oh, it's in the first resolve.
Okay, page eight then.
Yeah.
Line 26?
Yes. It says federal property in Guam. I just wanted to add the words then after in Guam to the government of Guam.
And that's after, so it'd be.
After the word Guam.
After Guam.
Right.
And then to the government of Guam, to add the words. The amendment. Any objections? No objections? So ordered.
And then, Madam Speaker, on the second resolve. Rather than, rather than, and again, I'm just proposing this amendment.
On page nine?
Yes, page nine. On line three. Where it said should turn over to the Guam Waterworks Authority. I would like to just, because we have a law that declares the water and the assets of the water to the people of Guam, that these are an asset of the people of Guam. I would propose an amendment that would just change it should turn over to the government of Guam. Rather than to the Guam Waterworks Authority. So, rather than a direct transfer, I think, you know, just even, even the resident, even the. The federal law says it should be turned over to Guam. And not specifically to Guam Waterworks Authority. So, I would like just to propose that, that it should be turned over to the government of Guam.
On the amendment. No objections, so ordered.
And then it would be the same on that next resolve line. On line 10, rather than to Guam Waterworks Authority. It should be just the government of Guam. And that would be the amendment.
On the second amendment then, without any objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in closing. Once again, Madam Speaker, I think that. You know. This, this is really, as many of my colleagues have articulated their expression with regards to the message that this sends. Is that it really is an intrusion on the desires of the people of Guam. And the authority of the government of Guam that's been vested in the people that it elects. But to me, the bigger message in terms of the federal government doing this. Is that until such time that the people of Guam exercise the right to self-determination. Then we will continue to face this kind of intrusion into the lives of the people of Guam. All of those that make Guam our home. And Madam Speaker. When we exercise that right to self-determination. We must all realize that that right of self-determination is not vested in all of the people of Guam. It is vested in the native inhabitants of Guam, the Chamorro people. And that the Chamorro people, when they exercise that right to self-determination. And we decide the direction and the status of our place in this community of nations in the world. That we will form a government. Establish our alliances with all the governments of this world. And that we will all participate. After that, all of us who then decide to make Guam our home and continue to make Guam our home. That we will all participate in the formation of our government and the establishment of those relationships. But the right to decide is only vested by both international law and by an affirmation of our administrating authority under that international law, the United States government. That it invested in this one group of people. And that it would be a violation of basic tenants of human rights to violate and dilute that right of the people of Guam. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Buen pobetu, Speaker Benglin. On the motion on Resolution 48. Speaker Judith Wantat, you're recognized on the resolution.
Sidus Massey, Speaker Dina Rose Munyabarns. I wasn't going to speak earlier, but there is an amendment that I wanted to proffer. And I also think that maybe this might be an appropriate time where I'd like to be able to submit this as part of my testimony and part of the journal. A statement that I had made actually in my weekly address this morning, because it was very appropriate. And I hope I'll be able to pull this off again in Chamorro that I did earlier this morning. Ni hita atan ta'ti sia eleksyon. Guinin edzu natatungo mas, guinin iman magas. Zata prepara hit para iman mai'mela siha na tempo. Let us look on the lessons from the past so that we may learn from our predecessors and be prepared for the challenges of our future. My dear people of Guam, they say that history always has a way of repeating itself. So for the sake of those who are unfamiliar with how this tragedy concerning the future of I Island plays out. Let me take you back 62 years ago to the month. The Guam Congress stage a walkout in March 1949 in protest of our subjugated status as a people. And most notably against the abuses of the military at the time. The first of those abuses were the condemnation of local lands. The second of those abuses was the unfair wage discrimination against local workers. And third, the military's favoring of new off-island American contractors. Sound familiar? In the first instance, the United States military to this very day are not fully utilizing the footprint of lands already seized from our people, yet they covet more. In spite of a golf course on Anderson. They want pristine lands that encompass a historic site in pocket. In the second and third instance. Wages behind the fence are considerably higher than they are outside in our community. While this is a privilege for the few. It creates a wage disparity between service workers in the same industry. But who serve different governments. I could understand paying skilled, uniformed personnel for their expertise. But I cannot let it go unaccounted that the US military consistently takes money away from the people of Guam. In order that they may provide a similar service. But solely for use by their constituents. But there is a more sobering reality we may learn about this story of the past. The real lesson that history provides for us is that there were front men. Our very own people who covered for the military officers doing these abuses. Who allowed for these corrupt armed service officers to profit illegally. 62 years later, we see that these front men are also right here amongst us. Who are opening up their arms on the tarmac to welcome the newest defense contractor. Or who stand there to pander for any opportunity to sell our public lands. Worse, the very water we consume. My goodness. If they could bottle the fine air we breathe and sell it, I bet that would be on the table. The moral of the story from 62 years ago is this. Justice shall prevail on the side of the righteous. And how could standing up for one's right to self-determination, or at the very least to one's right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, be any less noble or righteous? Congresswoman Madeleine Bredalio stated that a Republican minority of Congress moved to include a provision in the National Defense Authorization Act allowing for the US military to sell us the water that falls from above, flows, and collects on our lands. Regarding this, and let me say, the 31st Guam Legislature shall never acquiesce to any threat upon the rights and liberties of the Chamorro people and those who choose to make Guam their home. I applaud Senator Tom Ada for introducing Resolution 48. And all of my colleagues who signed along and are co-sponsors in support of that piece, which firmly objects to the impositions of Congress. Resolution 48. I know we said voices are concerns, that's what I said earlier, but with Senator Panglinen's amendment, then that changes it. With the proposed transfer of US Navy waterworks to the Guam Water Works Authority, or to the government of Guam, we, the people of Guam, assert that the Navy waterworks infrastructure should be transferred at no cost to Guam's taxpayers. I repeat, we will not falter in our stance to have the waters that fall from our skies be remitted at no cost to the people of Guam. Further, the resolution clearly states our objections to the federal government once again dictating the terms of our democracy. How is it that Congress may impose that a federal official have a seat on a duly-elected commission? It should not be the prerogative of any nation to impose its heavy hand on a free and democratic people. The days of conquest and imperial rule by force are long gone. This is why we will continue to inform our community and the free world that you simply cannot walk up, take what isn't yours, and sell it back to the very people you exploited. For each of us as individuals and as a community, to allow this would be self-destructive. We will not lay idle and pay the price of liberty or the multi-millions in cash that the Department of the Navy is requiring of us for the water in Fennel Lake. We learn nothing from history if we choose not to apply the lessons and questions of the past. And with this said, let me pose the following questions for us to ponder. Questions that our leaders were faced with, asking themselves almost half a century ago. How much more land must we give up? How much more of our natural resources must we give away? Rather, or buy back for the people of Guam? At what price are these front men or women willing to sell Guam? And finally, at what price tag is the cost of this great Guamanian dream? And if your response is, "Not another inch to give, not a cent for water that is rightfully ours and that our people's dignity is not for sale", then we stand united. My dear people of Guam, this legislature had convened this morning for the sole purpose of discussing Resolution 48. What is going on here, right here on Guam, is a page right out of history. Except in our case, we're regressing in our evolution as a democratic people. The federal government took and continues to take our lands and is selling us our very own resources. Now ask yourselves this question. Will the military sell the water from Niagara Falls to the people of New York? I think not. Remember this. When you control a people's water, you control the people. A more informed social consciousness that has emerged must apply the moral of that 62-year-old story, which is this. Rise against the injustices of the government, or of any government, and demand for nothing less than equality. Madam Speaker, I am definitely in support of this resolution, and I thank every single one of our colleagues who are also, who also stood up in support of this resolution. And I commend everyone for all the different angles in which they've presented their support for this resolution. And I think the message is very strong. And I hope, yes, that our delegate is listening to the voices of the people of Guam and will take this message back to Washington with her. Madam Speaker, I know one of our colleagues that discussed this earlier. And that brings me then to an amendment that I wanted, that I want to make. And that's on page seven. And this concerns me. I mean, I can understand, of course, the reason maybe for having placed this particular whereas. But I just feel that what we're doing is shooting ourselves here in the foot by actually having to, to reiterate something as this. Because then this is exactly the comment in which the experts or consultants who had written portions of the DEIS in terms of how the social-cultural issues will be mitigated or addressed or no longer become a problem in Guam. And that is exactly the issues that we consider dear to our heart from all the past injustices. And that's the whereas starting from line 13 to 16. And what I would prefer is that whereas the CCU is composed of five commissioners elected by the registered voters of Guam, period, and delete the rest. Because that very language is the language in the DEIS also that says that if this past injustices will never become an issue for Guam because we would have diluted anyway the people here. And any issue that talks about the past, that talks about our Chamorro self-determination, that talks about the compact impact, that talks about our culture being diluted, comes and stems from that DEIS. And we all know that. And this was, actually was listed there too, where they even said, yes, they can actually come in and change the whole face of the government of Guam. And Senator Manu Silveira Tyhuan said it eloquently. Is this the next place now that they want to come and have maybe a third of their voice? This is the last bastion of the government of Guam, the people of Guam. And that is the government of Guam. It's the seat here. It's the seat in Adlup as well. What else are we going to give up? So I hope my colleagues would support then at least is keeping that language, which is true, it's factual. That the CC is composed of five commissioners. Because that's the way we had planned it when we created the CCU. And that they will be elected by the registered voters of Guam, period.
So Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, if you're listening, it's on page seven, line 13. The amendment would read, whereas the CCU is composed of five commissioners, each elected by the registered voters of Guam, period?
Yes.
That's it. On that amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, if there are any objections, no objections, motion carries. Speaker Wampat, please proceed. You can continue.
I think I've said it all. I should have used that as part of my argument, but Dinah Massey, Speaker Munya Barnes.
Buen pobeto, Speaker Wampat. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the main Resolution 48? If everybody has spoken, I would ask Senator Tom Ada, if you wish to close. You're welcome to do so at this time.
Sezus Massey, Madam Speaker. Ani finna na usanti puristina lingwahi gi lai. Ni put paro zan gen para tsuli toti i hanum. Gini ni militat, ni sita ta fahan toti. Finna matu gana shoku a man ma bendit nu lala la. Gi finu English, we were sold down the river, and particularly the Finna River. Nu pres magai da gov stutbazo. Pues nu aniu tu gi utu gi i kung grushuta gi the Washington. Ufaisin leku hafash di. Legna a etamuna alang sa nu angin unliya gi na permissive language me. Lo magai nea ma sa na antrobakau na shoku sa kalana fa du xi Rex. Na leku lo zan gen untaitai pas papa, unlii na ti permissive. Na legna zan gen magai na hasu paro nae toti. Ni sita ta fahan, ni sita ta nae nu, nu 33% na, na voting rights gi CCU. Pues todui magai du lii ti dinansi lo. Uno nu, there's a silver lining to just the umgan gua ha problema. Lo leku lu ki na gua ha nu afasina ni para ta na maos ta fa maoli xti mona. Lo estai manatungo sa nu magai ma diskuti maoli todun nu por hafash ni intenya puristina resolution da ni ma tsuguenya ni federal law 111-383. Magai na ti dinansi na zan gen tasedi. Now, hononawa istina lai ni zan gen para ta fa manoa toti ni i hanum. Gi Fena, nan sita ta fahan. Pues teniki parewa lu ki na hinasu. Teniki nu huma olum zan gen gua ha ta alu sta mona o zan ti mani sita nu ta nu access lan ma agang. Ni sita ta alu benti lu ki tu para ta fahan toti. Para ta fahan toti edzi haga xi zotan. Leku na ti dinansi no. Ti dinansi lu ki na zan gen para tasedi sti na u falofanha. Ra ti ta hatshai bosta ta sanoangi na ti dinansi sti. Teniki ti tsogugu finna matu hun gi CCU. Ni para ta nae si zazan voting rights. Pues teniki amanu next. Teniki man holum benti gi, gi airport. Sa bulan nu slapi federad ma holum gi sa para xi lu ki paro van saunov. Van DC ha fa pa ma tsugi to dunis lapi. Pues imputantina ta na poraha gini. Ra gu imputantina u hutatsu i izotanu congressu. Xi Madeleine Bredalio toti gi the Washington DC. So sanoangi, chloro, zan agang. Na ti dinansi istina lingwahi, ni sita ma funas. Ni sita ma funas. Zan ni sita ma atan toti. Ta manua manamaneera ni manoa toti ni infrastructure ni Navy, ni electricity dog. Toti gi 1992. Ti, ti, ti ma bendi toti gi Guam Power Authority. Na man manoa i. Legna esti gi sia na klaushin performance standard. Ni si sita in segui. Ra gu gun sinai zan segui na performance standards xi guru na maoli teniki xi bisyu. Ra ta za nu, ta za tsat hinasu. Na para xi aparo pa pogo pa manoa i guatu i Navy. A Guam Power Authority sa para i Navy pogo para i customer. Pues debi na parewa na hinasu. Uma na holum gi para i manoa i toti. Ni i hanum. Na ta fan taotzung, ta fan akun trata, ta fan. Estamatsotsugi, di di ste ma push na shoken. Haga sa man ma taotzung i CCU. Zan i militat, gini gi za Guam. Ni put ma atan, tai manu hafashan is na klaushin performance standard. Paro ma, na ni sita para, para toduit. Para, para benefetu todu. Afashan na klaushin performance standards ni sita fan ma, that we have to meet. Sa para ta si guru na maoli xi bisyu. Estadu todu matsotsugi. Pues ni sita na u hono toti congressota. So sanoangi, i manatungo ni gi toti na ti dinansi sti. Ani sita ta funas sezuna lingwahi. Ta mena ta ta na maos maoli boona. Mena ta na maos dinansi. Mena ta na maos silung. Ni ta manusti na sinai ta, ta nae guatu i, i hanum gi, gi za Guam.
Madam Speaker, I, I certainly appreciate the, all the sentiments that have been expressed and the thoughts that have been expressed by many of my colleagues. In particular, I certainly applaud the freshman senators who stood up and stood their, stuck their heads out of the foxhole and expressed their sentiments. And I certainly applaud them for having to do that because it can be a scary thing sometimes for somebody who's not used to getting behind the mic. I certainly applaud them for having done so. And I applaud them for having seen that this is an issue not just about selling the water infrastructure back to Guam, selling back to us what was ours in the first place, but that there's also a lot more to it. It goes a lot deeper. That it goes into the intrusion of our local governance. And that if we set, if we just let this go, it sets a precedence for things that we do not want to happen. It sets a precedence for the slow infiltration of the federal government into our local governance here. And we certainly don't want to see that. So, Madam Speaker, with that, I certainly, I appreciate the support that has been expressed by my colleagues. And, and I, I don't think there's any other motions that I need to make. Do I?
Except for the motion and to send it down to the third reading file? So, on, on that motion then, without any objections?
Madam Speaker.
On that emotion first, okay, to send it down?
I guess I would, I would, I would ask if we can vote without engrossment. And, and so that we can dispose of this matter.
So on the motion then, to vote on Resolution 48 without engrossment, are there any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Guthers, you want to take us down to the voting file? Over there, okay, third reading, okay, sorry about that. Okay, so. So, rest, yes, rest, so we're in after the roll call votes, so Resolution 48, the clerks can please read the title.
Resolution number 48, as 31COR substituted. Introduced by Tisiada, R. Jervespiu, JP Guthers, and others. Relative to voicing sense of ilusletur in Guam with the proposed transfer of United States Department of the Navy waterworks infrastructure to the government of Guam. To the autonomy of Guam's democratically-elected Consolidated Commission on Utilities to stating unequivocally that Guam asserts the Navy waterworks infrastructure should be transferred at no cost to Guam's taxpayers and to insisting that the government of the United States honor the riparian rights of the people of Guam over their island's freshwater resources.
Roll call. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tonyara. Senator Blas. Senator Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthers. Senator Mavini. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Espishu. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyerwin. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Yamashita.
Resolution number 48 dash 31, received 13 ye votes and two excused absence. Resolution number 48 dash 31 is duly passed by this committee. Can I ask Senator Guthers maybe if we can make a motion to go back to motion so that we can go and commit at the whole in preparation for tomorrow?
Madam Speaker, try to make motion that, you need a back motion.
On that motion then, without any objections? So ordered. And the committee to, motion to resolve.
And to, to be of the whole in Guam, and to accept to Guam.
So we're going to, the motion is to resolve and to commit at the whole so that for the purposes of allowing the Congresswoman to, yes, and that, and allow all of the guests to be seated.
All seated, present cases here.
And that, so, and we're on recess until 10:00 tomorrow morning. Okay, so we are then recess until 10 o'clock tomorrow morning for the congressional address. Thank you very much.